Zoning Board of Appeals, our meeting for June. Our next meeting is regularly scheduled for Wednesday, the 12th of July. And if you would all rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First, we'll introduce our board. On your far right, a new member, welcome to Beverly Silveira. Next to Beverly, Michael Wozniak. Next to him, Ed DeJesus. Here to my left, your right, is Rachel Bruce and our council's Kelly Norton. I'm Craig Brady. I've just been appointed chairperson for the ZBA, so this is my first opportunity to make a fool of myself. Our recording secretary is Jessica McClellan. To the agenda, we have no executive session for tonight. Has anyone had a chance to read the minutes from our last meeting?
Yes.
Motion by Rachel.
Second.
Second by Ed. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And one recusal, I'm guessing. Absention, sorry, abstention, not recusal.
Okay, new business. We have no new business tonight. We have action on decisions. The first is me and... Let me find that one. Too many things here. I got things completely out of order. Is the applicant present? There you are. How are you? Good, thanks. So, this is a draft decision for temporary special permit for the construction of dwelling unit for additional family members, whereas pursuant to section 310-35 of the Village Code, a temporary special permit may be granted by the Zoning Board of Appeals for additional dwelling unit for the use of family members in accordance with certain requirements. Said property is located in the R1A zoning district along Gregory Lane in Central Valley and is known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as section 228, block 6, lot 16. So after several pages of facts and findings, as a consequence of the board's discussions, the Zoning Board of Appeals hereby grants the requested area variances described and discussed above, to the extent noted above, conditioned on the applicant receiving all necessary permits from the building department and construction consistent with the submitted plans, including that the facade of the addition matched the existing dwelling, and hereby finds that the variances as granted are the minimum variances necessary to preserve and protect the character of the neighborhood. Additionally, the Zoning Board of Appeals hereby grants the applicant's request for a temporary special permit for an additional dwelling unit for the use of family members pursuant to Village Code 310-35, as stated and described herein, subject to the following condition. First, the additional unit may only be used for up to two additional persons directly related to the owners of the principal dwelling unit. Two, the existing single-family dwelling may be expanded to accommodate the unit only as shown on the plans. Three, in the event the property is either sold or the additional unit is vacated, the permit will become null and void. The property shall be restored to its original single-family status and permanent cooking facilities, i.e. stove, shall be removed. Four, the applicant property owner shall provide to the Zoning Board of Appeals the names of all persons who intend to occupy the additional unit. The homeowner and intended occupants shall sign the special permit upon its approval by the ZBA. And lastly, all facilities are subject to an annual inspection by the building department. Per section 316-9E of the Village Code, this decision shall expire if the building permit is not obtained by the applicant within 180 days from the date of this decision or the date of final approving by the planning board if such an approval is required. The board may extend this time for one additional period of 90 days if such extension is warranted by the particular circumstances. Do I have a motion to accept this draft?
I will make a motion.
Motion by Rachel.
Second.
Second by Ed. I need to do a roll call. So I'll start with Beverly.
Abstain.
Abstain?
Abstain, okay.
Aye.
Mics on aye?
Aye.
Ed, aye?
Aye.
Rachel, aye, and I vote aye. So we will sign off on that, and you have everything you need to do.
Where do I get to sign this special permit?
So what's going to happen is I'll finalize it for the chairman's signature tomorrow. He will electronically sign it, and then I will send it to the building department. So, let's see, the mail would probably get there Monday. Today's Wednesday. Monday, stop by, and you should be able to get it, sign it, and that'll be fine.
Okay.
Same thing's going to be for you.
You're welcome. Thanks.
And you'll get a copy of it, too, for your files from the building department.
Okay, thank you.
We had another item on our agenda from an application for Troxel. They withdrew that application, so it's not under consideration. Our next item is Sylvia Ross. Review a draft decision for a special permit to permit a second dwelling unit for a family member, Martina Espña, pursuant to section 310-35 of the Village Code. Said property is located in the R1A zoning district at 6 Carroll Drive in Highland Mills and is known on the tax maps as section 202, block 1, lot 46. So after fairly short facts and findings item, although this took a long time to get to, the decision is as follows. As a consequence of the board's discussions, the Zoning Board of Appeals grants the applicant's request for a temporary special permit for an additional dwelling unit for the use of family members pursuant to Village Code 310-35, as stated and described herein, subject to the following conditions. One, the additional unit may only be used for up to two additional persons directly related to the owners of the principal dwelling unit. Two, in the event the property is either sold or the additional unit is vacated, the permit will become null and void. The property shall be restored to its original single-family status and the permanent cooking facilities, i.e. stove and kitchen facilities, shall be removed. Three, the property owner shall provide to the Zoning Board of Appeals the names of all persons who intend to occupy the additional unit. The homeowner and the intended occupants shall sign the special permit upon its approval by the ZBA. And four, all facilities are subject to an annual inspection by the building department. And same as the other one, if, well, there's no building permit, so...
Right, so that's why I put if no building permit is necessary?
Not necessary. So, do I have a motion to accept this draft?
I make that motion.
Motion by Ed.
Second.
Second by Michael. Beverly?
Abstain.
Abstain. Michael?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Rachel?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so...
Congratulations.
Same thing, finally, yeah.
Same thing, yeah. They should have it by Monday, and you'll get a copy for your records, and it'll just need to be signed by Monday.
Thank you.
Early night for you this time. Good night.
Good night. First on our agenda is Woodbury Townhouses. This is a continuation of a public hearing requesting a variance for the construction of 12 townhouse units with less than the required acreage and containing parking in the front yard, whereas pursuant to section 310-49C, the required lot area is 6,000 square feet per unit, requiring 72,000 square feet, where 59,045 square feet are proposed. And whereas pursuant to section 310-40E, off-street parking in the front yard is prohibited and parking within the front yard is proposed. Said property is in the HB zoning district along Falkirk Avenue in Central Valley and is known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as section 231, block 3, lots 6.1, 6.2, and 7. The applicant is not present. They actually asked that this note be read into the minutes. Dear Madam Clerk in April, we adjourn this matter to the June 14th, 2023 ZBA agenda in the hopes that the planning board would have acted on secret before then. Since the planning board has not acted on secret, the ZBA cannot act, and we request that at this meeting, the ZBA open and adjourn the public hearing to the August 9th, 2023 ZBA meeting. As agreed to last time, our appearance at the June meeting is not required. Thank you for your courtesy. Signed, J. Myro from Bluestein Shapiro Rich and Perone. So can I have a motion to open the public hearing?
I'll make a motion.
Second. Second by Ed. All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we basically need, do we need a motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn, yes. Because I don't think anybody here is present for this.
I'll ask anyway, anyone here present for this application? Okay.
Wait, I wanted to clarify, I heard carryover and adjourn, which...
It's going to be adjourned.
Adjourned, okay.
So can I have a motion to adjourn this into the August 9th ZBA meeting? Motion by Rachel.
Second.
Second by Michael. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. That is easy. Next, our agenda is Soufranc. Is that pronounced correctly? Are they here?
They are not here. Why don't you move them to the end and state their issue?
Okay, so we'll hold that until the end. Next on our agenda, then, is Light Bright Signs in Hampton Inn. This is a continuation of a public hearing requesting variances for the construction of two additional wall signs from Village Code Chapter 310, Attachment 11, relative to the number of signs permitted in the IB district. Said property is located in the IB zoning district along Center Drive in Central Valley and is known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as section 225, block 2, lot 1.11. Welcome.
Hi. So I am back about the East Elevation additional letter set for Hampton Inn and then those small welcome letters for the canopy.
Okay. So does anybody need a refresher on what we were dealing with on this, or is everybody good? Okay. Good so far. So tell us...
Yeah, so the owner is looking for an additional set of letters on the East Elevation because there's two highways that will see the sign, and he feels like it'll improve his business.
Okay.
And his revenue. He is tucked away in that plaza. It's hard to see him, and he does want to take advantage of all the travel on those two roadways. So that's why we're going through all these steps, you know?
Right.
Because there's nothing in between, no one else is going to see it, just the people on the highway. That's his main focus, and there's nobody in between the building or the roadway. Just land.
Right, so... It's the East Elevation. So you're talking about the East Elevation...
Yes.
Which faces effectively the throughway and is visual, would be visible from six, provided...
Yes.
So I think I asked the last time, are you cutting down trees?
No, I confirm that, so that's a no.
Not going to remove the trees, which means that additional sign really is only going to be visible in the winter.
Yeah, but Route 6, I think there's more visibility, even in the summertime.
I came down six.
That's what the owner thinks, but I mean, he's willing to incur the cost for the sign to get whatever he can get, you know?
If he's willing to incur the cost for the sign, it's going to be hidden by trees, I think we're okay with that. Should be okay, right?
I think that's a normal one, and also, I mean, like, you know, it's even if the tree might be a little bit covered up by trees, depending on the type of year we're coming down the mountain, we are exactly, hopefully people are paying attention to the road, but you know, if they have to look away for a minute, maybe they'll see the sign.
That's what he's hoping, and he's hoping, you know, if they're tired, they might say, okay, let me find this hotel, you know?
Of course, but the reason I say this is because I think that Hilton Hampton Inns use a very specific shade of red, which is part of the branding, so if you see it, you know, far away, I mean, I know, me personally, when I've been driving on roads, especially in the middle of the night, you know, going to here and there, buy some of the red, I know typically that's a Hampton Inn, so...
That's, that's good to know.
Yeah, so, but, you know, just...
Recognition, right? It's the corporate recognition. And then those welcome letters also, they're doing that in all the Hampton Inns.
Yeah.
So we would appreciate that as well, if you guys would let us have those as well. They're non-illuminated.
Right.
They're pin-mounted letters.
Pleasure with the board. Any questions for the applicant?
Where would those welcome letters be placed again? Do you mind me?
Oh, on the canopy.
On the canopy, so where it says...
When they're pulling in.
Clearance right now would be like next to it?
Yeah, let me just refresh my memory.
Because I'm looking at one picture, just says clearance, whatever, or...
Yeah, the clearance, remember the board had a question about whether the building inspector is going to count that square footage?
Right. He did opine that they are legally pre-existing, non-conforming signs as they exceed the three square feet for the two clearance signs.
So he's going to add those into the request?
He's saying that those are...
Oh, oh, that's great. Okay, thank you.
Gotcha.
Could I come up to you to show you?
Sure.
Sure, please. I'm trying to see it online if I can. Okay. Oh, I see.
So the welcome signs are non-illuminated, it's just lettering?
Yes.
Like the clearance, so it's effectively blending in, okay? All right. Perfect, thank you.
And also, like, when the headlights hit, the white at night, it'll illuminate it that way, correct?
It's, no, they're not reflective.
Oh, they're not, okay.
No.
All right.
No, but I'm sure they have lighting there, you know, so you could see the canopy. Yeah.
Of course, yeah.
Got it now, thank you.
Anything else from the board? I'll take that as a no. Thank you. So at this time, I'll ask if anyone from the public has, would like to comment on this. Probably not. Okay? Motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make that.
Okay, public hearing closed. We will discuss the factors at the end and let you know.
Okay, how would I find out? Tomorrow?
You can either stay here tonight and listen, or you can call the building department tomorrow. I think that's enough.
Okay, and then I guess I'll just find out tomorrow, that's all.
So we would be effectively, if we were to approve this, we would offer a resolution to ask council to draft a decision, which would be next meeting in July, which we would then approve it then.
Oh, okay. The next meeting.
It's similar to what we did earlier with the two other applicants?
Yeah.
Who approved that, and that was, that was approved last month.
Oh, okay.
So it's a little monthly.
All right, and I, I don't need to attend, because, right?
Next month?
Yeah.
It's your choice if you'd like to or not. As you saw this meeting, at that point, the board is just acting on decisions, so they generally don't, you know, there's no new presentation.
Yeah, I saw you didn't engage them, yeah, you just, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Very nice.
Okay. Come back to that. And our last item is the Woodbury Common Pylon Sign. This is a continuation of a public hearing requesting variances for the construction of a pylon sign from Village Code Section 310-30D2A and C and Chapter 310, Attachment 11, relative to the number and size of signs permitted in the IB and LIO districts. Said property is located in the IB and LIO zoning districts along Red Apple Court in Central Valley and is known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as section 225, block 1, lot 70.2. My city applicant's present, welcome.
Hi, thank you. My name is Caitlin Perone. So we're here to address some of the items that were brought up at the last meeting. So the first one is the actual area of the signs, which we had been, a little bit of a miscommunication from the planning board meeting. So the total area of each face is 124.1 square feet or 248.2 square feet for both sides. The front-to-back dimension between the sign faces is 17 inches. The, the capital of the sign is consistent with, is consistent with others on site at 2 feet 6 inches wide, but we're not including that in the actual signage, which was part of the confusion we had last time. And the actual sign width is 16 feet or less. The capital is shown at 21, which really is just a representation of what the other ones look like on site. We also wanted to bring up that the, the side, the letters are not pin-mounted, they are push-through. They are graphic, not graphically mounted, and they're going to be internally lit. And then there was a question about the sign height, so it seems like they were including the base height in that calculation, but the base is really just to establish a level grade, and then the sign would actually be 25 feet high, which is measured from the base, which is at curb level of Route 32.
So the base is curb level to 32?
Yes.
So effectively, if you put a straight edge...
Right.
From the curb, it would lay on top and be totally level with the curb?
With the curb of Route 32. So the base really just is to bring it to grade?
So per the board's request, I did ask the building inspector about the sign height issue, and he said that the freestanding sign shall not exceed the 25 feet in height, so he is including that part in the height of the sign that is basically leveling, leveling the ground? I don't know how you would phrase that, but the base, he said, would be included in the height of that.
So he's including that two-foot base, so it would bring it to 27?
Yeah. So either the sign would need to be modified and lessened in height, or you would be also asking for a height variance from the sign. For the height of the sign, I'm sorry.
If I could just add a comment, this is Dave Mistrada. With regard to the elevation, the, you know, the height, because of the grade change in that area, you know, the other, the other option that we could obviously do is grade up the area a little bit and just have landscaping around that as well, but with the setback, it's kind of shown on AO2. The base alone is that two-foot base on the bottom, but below that, that 2 foot 6 area is to just level it out the grade. So I'm not sure if the building inspector was referring to that leveling out portion as well.
I sent in the plan to take a look at it, so that I didn't misrepresent any engineering terms or anything like that. That's the response that I received.
Okay. So I think therefore, we would be looking, we would just, we would keep it at the 25-foot height, we wouldn't be looking for a height variance.
Okay.
So does that mean you...
We would have to, we would have to fill in the area a little bit to level it out, obviously, and then we would put the sign on top of that, because you can't build it on a, on a slope surface.
But the sign would remain at 25 feet?
Okay, I, I had a couple of questions. So the last thing we got was this.
Mm-hmm.
So the tenant ID area is listed as 52.6 square feet, is that?
Correct.
Correct, so it's one side, and we treat, because they're identical on both sides, it's one side. So 52.6 square feet for that, and then the, you're calling it the project ID area, which is...
Yes.
This area up here is 71.5?
Correct.
So we're at, we're, we're under...
We're at a total...
Where is that?
So that's the 124.1.
Sorry, I'm missing a page.
I think I have 225.3.
But it's not, it's not double this, right? It's not, it's 52.6 for all of these, plus 71.5 for this.
Well, it's that plus that.
Right.
Which is...
Because this is all of them. So each one is 8, 7, 5, and they're 6.
6, 7, 8.
124. Is that right, 124?
Correct.
I just want to make sure.
That's what we came up with, too.
So the only comment I have or question is, you're only counting a rectangle around the actual dimensional lettering and logo, right?
We are.
My understanding or my interpretation, could be an interpretation, I could be wrong, of the code would be that the entire area here would be counted, not just a rectangle around the lettering.
If I'm not mistaken, last meeting, that was a point, because we had originally presented it as the entire area, and then when we spoke last time, it was just where the letters are.
I don't remember that.
And so with the...
In any event...
...the line length is different, because up for Woodbury comment I had is 9 feet 1 inch times 16 feet 1 inch quarters, which is an area of 146.9.
You were taking the whole area, as opposed to just the lettering.
Yeah, so I did send that to the building inspector, just to confirm calculations. I haven't forgotten that. I sent in the height folder earlier, so it did go with that.
Is there any way to simply shrink that down, so that there's not as much area? Because I believe, well, do we want to wait for the building inspectors?
It would be your interpretation then.
Do you want to wait for the building inspector? There's one.
Yeah, I think it's important for the scale of the sign, inconsistent with, I think, maybe past approvals are, and what our understanding is of the code, that the area that the, the actual, the box, how we have it boxed now is, is how we'd like to maintain. We're very, you know, we're very focused on the fact that we want it to look appropriate, we want it to look nice. Even though the town or the village permits multiple colors, we don't. We want it to be, we think it's more premium to have black and white only, so we won't allow our tenants to do that. So again, we're very focused on the aesthetics and making it look appropriate and in place, and therefore we feel that the way we have it, other than the height, which we can reduce to the 25 feet, needs to be maintained.
Questions, comments, thoughts for the applicant?
I have none.
Nothing at this time?
No.
Not at this time?
So then I'll let the board and the applicant know when I hear back from the building inspector on his calculation of the, of the sign area as proposed, and we'll know, just clarify that the variances are...
There it is. I know, well, just go through this real quick. Are we done with that? This is the question. Are we done with that? Okay, I don't have anything further. Do you have anything for us? Okay.
Thanks for your time.
Yep, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this point, I don't need to ask the public, because there is no public. Do we carry it over?
Yes, you say it's turning to your next meeting, and, uh, is that July seventh, seventh?
I, I guess my, my only question would be, in the next meeting would be July, would the, the resolution, if it, if it's, if it's in favor, the building inspector agrees with our calculation, would the resolution be done and approved then, and then we could move forward back to the planning board? Or would there be another meeting after that where we-
So, typically, it's another meeting after that. Um, if the board wants to discuss this application a little bit tonight, I may be able to put together the framework for where I think it's going, and then obviously, it can be amended on that evening based on your conversations, if you'd like to do that.
I, I think we would like to do that as well, because-
Yeah, we would appreciate that.
So, we'll go through the five factors, et cetera, and-
Pretending that this would, um, require the sign area variance that was-
Correct. Yeah, working under that assumption. Okay. So, may I have a motion to carry the public hearing over? Sorry?
You're gonna have the discussion and then you can carry it?
Oh, okay. You wanna do that now? All right. Very good. So, where's my five factors? There we go. You don't have to stand.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
No, he said you don't have to stand.
You have to stand, and you don't, you don't have- Sorry, and, and- You don't have to stay, you can stay if you'd like, absolutely. So, the first, uh, factor, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the area variance, and I need to find the applicant's responses to these, which I know is in here. Too many papers. Here we go.
Yeah, I thought there's two, um, things that there's an area variance after that.
Yeah, we're gonna use that one. Granting this variance would not detract from the neighborhood created detriment to nearby properties. The intention of the sign is to create an attractive and welcoming entrance into the property.
I agree, um, it obviously-
It is across the street from the school. So, I, I would say yes, that is a great problem. Okay?
There is already a sign there that exists, so, there, there, I mean, not, not a third sign, but there is a sign, you know, obviously an entrance to the commons that is also across the street right now, so.
So, I want to have two across the street from that. Two different entrances.
I don't want to, I'm, I'm just cat, trying to see both sides.
Yeah, that's why I'm trying to get it from the point of view of looking out the window as a child.
To be sure, you can't see the sign right now from a window anyway from the school?
The one that exists.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The one that exists.
It's a large sign, I mean-
Yeah, it is.
It is.
My concern is not necessarily over, I mean, honestly, it's really over the size person, or, you know, from a standpoint of looking at the surrounding area, you know, just because I think that also this area has grown so much in recent years, become very commercialized, it's like here we are, you know, one more sign. But at the same time, though, you know, you know, property has the right to put up a new sign that's in time when it's branding and this and that, so.
I can see both sides of it. Ed, you too?
I, that's, that's my dilemma. I'm seeing both sides. Negative of being across the way from the school, and it distracts from the students to be in there, but it's also helps them drive business, because this is the major road right there, the only road in and out of our town. So, it's, I'm on the fence on this one.
Okay.
I mean, also, if you're looking just like how much, I mean, this is, might be the track there, or look at just in the fact that, you know, thirty-two used to be, you know, two-lane street going up and down, now it's four lanes, with the divider in the middle, you know, so that's just, you know, it's just, on, on, on one end, it's, it's, you know, it's one more thing, you know, how we're, how, how the community's changing and transforming, better, you know, better words, depending on how you see it, but at the same time, we wanna make sure that we're driving people to come into our community and, and, you know, prove this as a future.
Um, I, I took the opportunity the other day to go to, use our friend Google's Street View, and if you look at the proposed placement of the sign, so, there's the exit, if you will, from the, the school?
Main entrance.
It's on the main exit, or the secondary?
That's the sec, that's the one, that's the second.
Secondary.
Yeah, right? The sign is proposed for here, and the school is largely, so it's down here, to the extent that I would say that, from what I saw, most of the classrooms on the south side, if you will, of the building, would see nothing-
Wouldn't see nothing.
-of the sign at all, they would see, you know, the edge. So, I, I, I understand, big sign, what have you, but from that perspective, I don't think, and the kids aren't, should, well-
They shouldn't be looking outside the window.
Shouldn't be looking out the windows.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't see a problem, and the other thing is, oh, we're concerned about the sign of Woodbury is already there.
Right.
Woodbury Common is already there.
We use it as a landmark already.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So, I, I'm, I personally would say I would agree with the applicant, it, it doesn't-
Okay.
-detract. Everybody, everybody agreed? Or not? I don't wanna-
I'm good with that.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
I'm, I'm, you know, obviously thrilled, but, you know, I do agree.
Okay. Michael, you agreed?
Yes.
Okay, just wanna make sure. Can the benefit you see be achieved by some other feasible method other than the variance? In consideration of the New York DOT setback requirement of variance in regards to the sign's height, and maximum sign area would be required for optimum visibility across both directions of Route thirty-two, and with the current code requirements, a road-facing sign at the center would not be visible or impactful to ong- oncoming motorists. Well, we've already dealt with the height issue, that's off the table. So, it's really, um, is there any other place to put a sign, I guess? And it's, I, I don't know that there is.
I think it's the perfect place for it, actually.
It really is, I, I would say. So, do we agree with the applicant, or?
Yeah, I agree.
No, it's making me uncomfortable, yeah, the elementary school, but I think so it's only kids.
I don't believe they can, right?
They can, so, you know.
Yeah, so, that's not an issue. Okay, Bev, you okay?
Yes, I agree.
Mike?
Yes.
Okay. Ed?
Yes.
All right.
I agree.
All right, we're all agreed. How substantial is the variance you're requesting? Has rendered the sign, well, again, I'm gonna sort of, I'll read it. Has rendered the sign withstand twenty-eight feet, which includes a flat base to accommodate the stop grade, a slope grade. The variance request for the width is minimal, the code requires twenty feet at most in width, and we are requesting a sign that is twenty-one feet in width. We're also requesting variance in the maximum sign area, requirement of two-hundred square feet to five-hundred twenty-eight, which includes text area of two-twenty-two. The increased size will maximize vis- visibility from both directions of Route thirty-two. So, these numbers have changed, it's not gonna be a twenty-eight foot, it's twenty-five feet, you're gonna maintain that, and with the discussions we had last time, you're not... Do we even have a sign? Well, yes. We're gonna go with two-twenty-nine, assuming that we need a variance.
Yeah, assuming that that's the case.
So, the only-
The scenario being conservative, but we did, uh, more accurate for that to be the answer.
Correct. So, I guess the question is, how va, how substantial is the variance?
It is a big sign, but logically speaking, it's, seems like it's proportionally the right size for the area. So, I, I-
Yeah, if the, um, the base is, won't be visible, it won't be a part of it, um, so that sign will be stabilized, how, in ground, on, um-
Well, they're gonna grade it, and the base would effectively be buried, is what I'm hearing.
Basically, with a twenty-five foot and above, on the, on the, on the, after the sign, everything else will be created in the foundation.
Which makes it a lot more palatable.
Yeah, numerically, this is not a large substant, it's not a substantial variance.
No.
So, do we agree with the applicant?
Yes.
Is that unanimous?
Yes.
Okay. Will the granting of the variance have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district? The var, the applicant says the variance will have a positive impact on the physical conditions of the neighborhood. The pile will create an attractive entrance into the shopping center. The type of sign requested is consistent with the Woodbury Common theme, and for other signage along Route thirty-two.
I tend to agree, it's similar to all the signs around Route thirty-two, so it does make sense. I don't, I don't see it as a negative impact for the, for the area. It is basically commercial, it's a highway for the most part, almost, so it's, I don't see a problem.
Okay, so you agree with the applicant?
Yes, I do.
Anyone else?
I agree in that the maintenance of the sign is readily available, and it doesn't become like a Home Depot sign down the block.
I have a feeling Woodbury Common wouldn't let that happen, just a guess. Just a wild guess.
I don't think so.
Michael, any thoughts?
No, I agree.
Okay. Rachel, you agree?
Uh, yeah. Well, ma'am, just, I'm just thinking back to the conversation we had, I mean, I feel like on some level, it's somewhat contradictory, because, you know, you, you talked about the implication, implications of these, kind of the aesthetics of the area, where like, on one side of the street, you have this massive, you know, various, at least a bit of shopping mall, on the other side, you have your kind of, you have all the camps as well as schools are, so it's really kind of, you know, I fall, I fall in the middle.
So, the, the specifics are adverse effect or impact on the physical condition?
Physical condition, no.
Okay, or environmental condition?
Not environmental, environmental as well.
All right, so you, you're agreeing with the applicant?
Yeah.
Even if you're on the fence, you're agreeing?
Yes.
And I agree with the applicant as well. So, the alleged difficulty self-created. The difficulty is not self-created, per the applicant, due to the additional lanes and increased size of Route thirty-two. The sign is beneficial only when visible from both directions. With the additional setback required from the New York State DOT, the sign must be rendered larger than is accepted by the code as written. So, again, it's minimal, but, um, I think like most that we encounter, it's self-created because they wanna put a sign up, which doesn't change anything, we don't have to agree with that. So, um-
And I know we're, we're, you're really focused on the sign area variances, but also remember that this is asking for an additional freestanding sign. One is permitted, they currently have two, uh, because one was previously non-performing, so they're asking for the third sign, so I just wanted to make sure everybody was keeping that in the back of their minds, as well. But yes, on a legal level, I agree this is self-created.
And that's what we're here for. So, do we unanimously disagree with the applicant?
Yes.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the board? So, you, if we're, we're treating this as effectively the sign area, small variance on top of the two-hundred square foot, is the way we're gonna treat this for the draft. The height isn't on issue, so there's no variance there, and the third sign, where one is permitted, in the village, they have two now, so this would be the third. I... I'll stop. I don't wanna drive everyone.
Rachel took a deep breath, I thought she was like, are you gonna stop, I'm gonna say something?
No, 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 I just, I did a deep, deep thought.
I, okay, I'm sorry.
So, this, this will be the third?
Yes.
So, the number three and number two are quite visible on thirty-two?
I don't know, no, so, the, so, my recollection, and you guys correct me if I'm wrong, the original sign that was at the new drive-thru, if you will, for your first entrance southbound to the schools, right, where thirty-two Biden was, that entrance had a sign there, originally. That was removed during the construction of thirty-two, and I believe it was in storage for a while, and then it was requested to be mounted at the circle off of Nininger. So, you go under thirty-two, and the circle there, that's where that sign was.
Right, because they added a third entrance, which had, they added a third.
So, that's where that sign went, and then the, the, so we're gonna call that sign one. Sign two is where?
When you come in, entrance B, we all would thirty-two, between the common and the property.
It's like the farther end of the school.
It's not, it's, it's parallel, the face of it's parallel, but it's, you wouldn't see it.
Is that wall-mounted?
It's mounted.
It's like right at the wall.
Right bef, it almost looks like it's wall-mounted, that's why I asked, okay. So, that's sort of in the property?
Yeah.
Right, and not visible to people traveling north-south?
Right.
On thirty-two.
So, I have some trouble.
I'll make a difference.
Yeah, I mean, you know, especially since they've wired the road, I mean, like, you know, the sign is a little bit harder to see now, you know, and I, and I know to act for Woodbury, just because I've driven there millions of times, but...
Okay. Michael? I'm okay.
There it is. I couldn't get my eye on the sign, they come in this way.
Yeah, this is thirty-two.
Yeah, that's the one.
Yeah, there.
Okay. So, what's the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion that, that we draft a letter of approval above the third sign and the-
So, you wanna offer a motion to ask counsel to draft-
Yes.
A draft decision, consistent with this discussion that has been taking place here tonight?
Yes. I'll, 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 I'll make a clarification if I may, so, above the so, we'll do this so, a conversation with the building inspector?
Yes, so that I know exactly what, if, if that one's necessary, and if it is, what the exact size is, and so I'll, I'll that out in the draft decision to the board, so that it's clear. I don't want the applicant to then have to come and add if something is-
Okay, so, what, what he says will just be reflected in the decision, but overall, if this motion passes, it will draft a favorable decision?
It will draft a favorable decision, but you obviously can make, with, as with any of these decisions, you can make whatever changes you would like to at the meeting prior to its adoption, you can make the changes, and that can get a revised version of the sign.
Okay, thank you, Karen.
So, if you don't like it, or you're a typo, you can fix it.
Always fix the typos. Okay, uh, motion, and do I have a second?
Second?
Beverly seconds, good job. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sounded unanimous. All opposed, just to make sure. None opposed. Good, so- Sure? Sure.
They're coming, they're the one who are, they're less, and I'm not saying that the governor, or assistant governor, or the governor, um, practically, we have the $10,000 in property taxes, or about $60,000, $10,000 of the schools, which I'm very proud of, um, but there's a lot of other things we do for the school, that, you know, we need, we, all of our awesome, uh, careers, and we coordinate with stores, both all that goes to the schools, or kids nervous, and they can't afford, we don't, we don't talk about that, we don't put articles out on paper, we do it because it's the right thing to do, and they know what to do, it's thousands of pieces of clothing, there's old rooms set up at the school, that we have set up, so that the kids can't afford, they really, nice clothes, for them. We, they need light towers for the graduation, we have no charge. And that's for other schools too, the innocent, the assistant superintendent who used to hear from the same town, he called me, he called us last year, maybe, light towers, because it was the football team, something, I think I liked that, so we're, we're making money, um, living community, which is very important, so, and if you ask this, maybe, I don't think we're, yeah, or, I just want to, if you guys ever need anything, or, we may, or anything we're here for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So before we move on from this application, yes, I provided to the, mister, if you could make a motion to assume lead agency status for an uncoordinated review.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in, yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? None opposed.
And to type this as an unlisted action?
Motion to type this as an unlisted action?
I make that.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? No? None opposed.
So I provided the board with a draft part two EAF. My normal practice, since you don't see too many of these, is the state has made these forms, and one column is no or small impact, and to me, those are two very different things. So when I check off that box, and I mean small instead of no, I put a little arrow on the right side of the page. So for this applicant, I did have two, potentially small impact, and the first was will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? That has to be a null impact, because they're before you. They don't comply with the code, so they're asking for variance, so that has to be a null impact. The second was, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? And that's because, again, they're before you, and you had to have the discussion of whether or not this would impact the community character. So I don't know if the board had any questions on the draft part two. For the part three, I responded that no question in part two, if answers not as large impact may occur. If any were, then we would ask the applicant for more environmental information, but that's not really the situation here for a sign. So if the board doesn't have any questions, and agrees with what is contained in the SEAF part two, I would ask for a motion to adopt the part two EAF, and then subsequently, if you would like, you can make a motion determining the significance of the issuance of a negative declaration. So we'll go with the part two first, did anybody have any questions?
I didn't.
Changes or anything?
Anyone?
No.
Okay.
And a motion to adopt the part two?
Motion to adopt part two AF?
I'll make that.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? No one opposed? And a motion to make a negative declaration. I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? None opposed.
And then last but not least, sorry, I got a, you know, a, a motion to adjourn the public hearing until July 12th.
I'll make that motion to adjourn.
I would second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Carrie? Okay. So, you're pretty well set.
Thank you.
Okay, and now we go back to sou front.
They are not here, they were notified that they are back on the agenda this evening. It's a little difficult for you to be considered without them at least getting a presentation. So you might want to see if anybody in this empty room wants to speak on, and then you might want to adjourn until July 12th.
Offer to the public, anyone wish to speak to this sou front application?
The ghost.
No takers. Very good. Can I have a motion to adjourn this to our next meeting in July? Motion by Rachel? Second by Michael. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None opposed. Okay, so that's that, and now the discussion on Hampton Inn Light Bright. Do we want to do... So I guess we do the five-part. I now know that I have to arrange these papers differently. It's not the clips that are the issue. It's me. Okay, so the five factors for Hampton Light Bright. Will the granting of this variance produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or create a detriment to nearby properties? The applicant states no, the additional east elevation wall sign will not cause any character detriments to nearby properties.
I mean, it's nearby properties are two highways, so it's really, it's not going to cause any problems. So I have to agree with them, it's not going to cause a problem.
Same.
Okay, agreed on all counts. Can the benefit you seek be achieved by some other feasible method other than a variance? The applicant states no, this requested area variance is necessary to receive approval on this additional wall sign. The property is at the max-allowed wall sign, per the current zoning regulations.
I tend to agree.
I agree.
I would agree too. Ed?
I'm good.
Okay, everybody's fine. How substantial is the variance that you are requesting? The applicant states this requested variance is very substantial, as Woodbury Plaza Center recently announced the expanding addition for two new additional hotels in the area. Granting approval for this variance will be extremely important for allowing good visibility to this high-traffic area.
It's, I mean, it's, I don't want to say that the line is really not a thing in the grand scheme of things, where you're far, you know, the farther away it is from, from the roads. In layman's terms, it's not that great, but...
Yeah, in, in square footage, it's not, right? It's really not that significant in...
The sign is 6.17, and the proposed new Hampton Inn sign is 63.47.
So numerically, they're not significant, and I'm just surprised that they would say that it's a substantial variance. Really, it's substantial in the context to them needing it, but it's, from a, from a, our standpoint, it's not. The way that he looked at it, it's an addition.
There are two additional wall signs, and so if you were, I'm gonna use a far example, so that, you know, but if you look at a different building, if you looked at Village Hall, and all of a sudden you had a sign, a sign, a sign on it, that's really what people would be thinking of, or, do you want to place litter with signage?
Yeah.
That's the term you frequently hear. But you put this in the context of the individual application, you look at it on a case-by-case basis, and then you decide what makes this unique or non-unique from neighboring parcels.
So I guess we could agree with the applicant? That it's substantial, but it doesn't...
It doesn't stop us from...
Prevent us from, from granting it, so thoughts? Good?
I'm good.
Will the granting of the variance have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood district? No, this proposed wall sign on the east elevation will allow much-needed visibility when coming off Route 6, Highway Northbound ramp. There are no residences or commercial businesses between the hotel and the highway. I can agree with that.
No, it's, there's nothing there, so how could it impact something?
And the typical is the alleged difficulty self-created? No, this property is located behind a shopping center, which makes locating very difficult due to the entry drive. Coming off Route 6 Highway and having this east elevation wall sign gives ample added visibility to customers finding their way to the hotel.
Agreed.
I do agree, I mean, also, because you have to also consider the, you have the rail, the train tracks running between there, so even if they wanted to expand further, they had to build the hotel where it is, they couldn't go any further.
They don't own that property.
That's also true, but, you know, there would be no option to purchase it in their mind, it's...
But the reality is, they don't have a sign for how many years that it's been there, and their business...
And they're always full.
Doesn't seem to have suffered. It's self-created, they want the sign, so...
But, I mean, I don't think that stops us from approving.
Right, it doesn't. It definitely doesn't. We don't...
It certainly can be split on any of the...
Right, exactly.
Factors.
So I'm a disagree that it's, it is self-created, that's my...
I agree it's self-created as well, it's...
Yeah, it sounds like a rebranding, more, more visibility.
Right. It doesn't prevent us from granting the variance, so that's fine. So, is, where are we on this? Everybody agreed, do we split, or?
I'm in agreement.
Agreed. Okay, so I'm the sole disagree.
Right, well, I think that it sounds like the board agrees that from a...
Agree, disagree?
Well, we can disagree. Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Wait, hold on.
It sounds like the board is agreeing with the point that they made in their argument, however, you're also saying that the way it's read, it is technically self-created, but you are split. So when I say split, I don't mean split, it is, that half of you are self-created, half of you are not self-created, just, you're looking at this one element, and you're seeing both sides in this particular instance, due to the location of the property and its surrounding materials.
I would agree with that.
Yes.
It's what I heard, and I was shocked.
Thank you for the translation.
For clarifying.
Thank you for the translation. So what's the pleasure of the board?
I...
So do we need to do this first? I think we did. So this is again, an unlisted?
Yes, so we need a motion to assume lead agency for an uncoordinated review.
I'll make a motion to declare the CBA as the lead agency for an uncoordinated review. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ed, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries?
Motion to type as unlisted.
I'll make that motion.
Ed? You have a second?
Second.
Second by Beverly. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, carries?
So on this one, I also prepared for you a draft part two EAF, um, again, a little arrow on the side indicate whether there may be a potential law impact. The first again was that the, will the proposed actions create material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? Again, they're before you, so they don't comply, and they're asking for variance. And will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? Again, that was one of the factors that you just discussed. This one had a third, and is will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources?
That's a mouthful.
In that case...
That's a lot.
Oh. I have it. Question 13A, wetlands or other regulated water bodies? No? Oh, question 15, longer than that? No bats, no water, okay.
It's a sign, I think because, I can't find it right now, but I believe because it's right up against the mountain, it was potentially visible from the state power plant over there.
Okay.
It was higher, and so coming down, again, I basically respond as on the part one. If you don't think that that's actually going to have a significant adverse environmental impact that would impair the quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources, then you can issue a negative declaration, finding that there would be no significant adverse environmental impact. Again, another mouthful. But we'd also need a motion to adopt the person.
So that would be first?
Yeah.
Pleasure of the board. Should we adopt this? I don't see any issue. So can I have a motion to adopt the part two as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, motion carries. And can I have a motion to make a negative declaration on this EAF?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
Second by Beverly. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? No, that's complete, and...
Motion to opt out, draft a decision to disown the land.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Ed, second by Rachel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? None opposed, motion carries. I believe that that concludes...
Yeah.
Our business for this evening.
I make motion close.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Last is...
Motion carries.